Annie, please silence or shut off your cell phones and join me in the budget language, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all. Any questions?
Yes, I have the First Amendment to ODC Agreement six zero four nine, OHA Agreement one six nine five one eight dash three, Mutual Aid Agreement for Public Health Services, County Council RFP, and a donation of the Take Group presentation.
So, Mr. Greer, do you want to start with our service pin?
Sure. Woo-hoo!
That looks good to come.
Ten-year service pin for Lily. Lily, actually, probably been here longer than ten years, but she's, she was hired in two thousand six, it seems like.
I don't know if that's some people.
She was hired in two thousand six, worked, worked for a little bit, left, went to, went to work in the state courts and do some different things, came back February fourteenth of two thousand twelve, and has been with our department since. When she first was hired, she was hired as our office manager. She was also our LEDs rep, LEDs Law and Protection Data System rep. She was also our criminal, she was also our Criminal Justice Information CEGIS rep. Her PD Service Work Coordinator, then she became our Treatment Court Coordinator. She, in two thousand seventeen, she started talking about wanting to become a probation officer. Wanted to know what she needed to do. We kind of set down a checklist of things of what she needed to do and what could do, what she could do, if that's what she wanted to do. And I've never seen it happen before in my lifetime, and I've never done it, went through and checked out all the boxes to get to where she, to get to where I wanted to be. Lily did that. She checked every box, was able to attend the academy, graduated from our academy, did well, came back and got her certification. So today Lily stands as our Drug Corp probation officer. She's still our LEDs rep, still our CEGIS rep. She's been influential in training our new office managers. We've had three since Lily became probation officer. The other two left for different jobs, not disgruntled, not as disgruntled employees. So Lily's, one of her greatest attributes is how she brings our team together. She's, for a long time, Zach called her mom because she was often kind of our motherly figure. She continues to do that today, but she's been huge in being able to bring our team together and keep us all focused on the team. And aside from that, Lily's a great friend to all of our employees, including myself, a great coworker employee and a leader.
And she does a really good job on the floors in the pro, pro and probation office, too. She does a really good job there.
Thank you.
Since we don't have regular meetings. Oh.
Thank you.
Picture, picture guys. Sorry, Lily, I'm gonna.
Dave, go get in there.
Well, can we have the team?
Oh.
Yep.
Is it a tin?
Yeah.
It's a tin. Of a bin.
Yes, you are.
It's a big thing.
Everyone.
One more dance move. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
Anne, do you want to, actually, you want to do a thank you trick?
It's my awkward thing. I don't believe, I've introduced our new office manager to, formerly to the board.
Would you like to bring her up?
I have to go.
After Gordon was promoted to, or hired as a probation officer, we hired Victoria Horlacher. Victoria worked with us till last winter when she decided to further her career with child welfare. We hired Chino Wright from the courts. About the time we hired her, Brandon got offered a job in Nebraska, so they love for Nebraska around the, around Christmas time this year. We were able to poach Jessica Gonzalez from the hospital. And Jessica's been with us since, she started mid-December, kind of doing a dual role working at the hospital, would come in in the afternoons and work in here to try to get some training done with Chino. She started officially full-time course right after the first of the year, so it's like a welcome, Jessica.
Jake, is she gonna make it through her probation period?
It's ten years for her.
Do we want to go ahead and just go down the list with Anne, or? Might as well. Anne, do you want to?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great list.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Something about this topic just clears out a room, doesn't it? So, as part of the budget build process, every year, I ask for you guys to give me some guidance on targets and goals that you have, primarily for general funds. Budget law requires that all the official action and all the specifics of the budget adoption occur in the public meetings that we advertise and hold in April and then again in June. So the, the things we talk about today are kind of generic in nature, even though we kind of get down to some actual numbers that are goals. But just to be clear, this, this meeting, this kind of sets the tone. There's no specific formal actions that occur today. So in your packets should be information. The first is kind of a budget memo that every year we go over and talk about different points. So if you want to pull that up, we'll just kind of start going through it. The first one on your list there is the unappropriated ending fund balance for general fund. Last year, through our budget build process, we were able to increase that amount to one million dollars. It's serving us well, but I can tell you that this next fiscal year, without the Biden money coming in, that we had kind of plugged in a conservative number on that, we're probably going to come in with a lower beginning fund balance than we've seen in a while. So I like the idea of sticking with a million dollars. Right now, the projections for general fund for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, with Biden money coming in next year are, are pretty favorable. They're, they're maybe as far as the overall numbers, so.
So, quick question, the Biden money's not coming in at all this year?
That's my understanding. Once Treasury got slammed with all the COVID relief dollars and all of that money for cities and counties and states and things like that, that was their focus. So the Biden legislation requires Treasury to adopt the formula and then send it out. So they kind of are taking a backseat for a little bit on formalizing how that money is going to get distributed to all the counties. There has been work done by NACO and WIR that, that makes that formula distribution very similar to PILT. So we have some rough numbers of what that would look like, but I am not anticipating Treasury getting those dollars out before June thirtieth. If they do, fantastic. But I'm not anticipating it right now. And it's a two-year, it's a two-year authorization. So we'll either get it this spring or this fall, and then the following spring and the following fall. That's how I see it.
So what are the advantages of a million dollars versus something a little bit less in the general fund?
Um, well, it's, it's a kind of a forced savings account. You can only use it if there's some kind of natural disaster. So when you set an unappropriated ending fund balance, you are telling the public, those are the dollars that we will have in our available cash flows starting the next fiscal year to carry us through until we start getting tax money. We have seen some counties and heard of some counties that do not set that money aside and run into issues, and they're drawing on reserves from other pots to make their general fund cash flows occur until they start getting taxes in November. So I don't want to be in that position. So I like to set that, set that and have it available. And our fixed costs continue to go up. And our salaries are going up, our benefits are going up, even our materials and services.
So why would we want that?
We don't want it to go down. We do not want it to go down. If anything, we want that number to go up and force ourselves to save it. So I think we want the restriction as a, as a budget place to hold it. So I, I would, I would recommend we just keep it where it's at, million dollars. I don't see a need to actually increase it for this year. I was happy that we were able to raise it last year. That was pretty good.
Because we're at, where were we at, like seven hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand?
It was, ah, nine hundred thousand for quite a few years. So we raised it a hundred thousand. But like I said, our, our fixed costs, our salaries and benefits have gone up significantly. We'll continue to do so.
So our fixed costs are going up significantly, but you want us to save that money?
We, we have to. We have to set aside more money to make it through from July, August, September, and October to pay payroll until we get taxes in November.
Because, because the fixed costs are going up, we want that proper to meet the growing demand.
So then I'm not borrowing funds on a tax anticipation note or from other balances that we have in reserves and things like that to make that cash flow occur. And I'm not saying raise it this year.
Have you had to, you had to dip into this reserve money before?
No, but there was, oh, so even this, this last year, you know, July through September twenty-one, we spent one point eight million dollars and we only have eight hundred thousand dollars in revenue. So we, we went down a million dollars from July first to September. So that, that's the money if we have it in beginning fund balance that we're using to support all of our costs until.
We also had our best tax refund here, too, in a while.
We, we had some prior year tax money come through on state appeals that did increase it. As far as the valuation of our taxes, we continue to get hit with the Brady Pipe depreciation. And just natural gas prices, although natural gas prices are going up. So we might see finally an increase again in that valuation this next year. We don't know that until we've already adopted our budget though.
And we usually find out, no, no, not.
Well. They changed it. We find out in May. I think they tried to give us a heads up in May if we have a, a valuation decline of a million dollars or more.
Because they slimmed us once and we didn't know it was coming?
No, we had no, no, no knowledge that it was coming until we already adopted the budget. And it was significant. So I'm not saying increase that this year. I think the analogy is great. I'm just trying to paint a picture of why we need to save it, have it there. Um, I don't know if we want to go through all of this and then see where everybody feels on each point. But the, the next item that we discuss is contingency for general funds. Budget law doesn't limit the amount that you can put there. However, they do limit how much you can move during appropriation transfers from contingency to the total fund appropriation, so it can only be fifteen percent. Um, if transfers are needed in excess of that, then you would do like a supplemental budget. So it requires a longer public notification process. Historically, we set contingency at two hundred thousand. This last year, through our budget balancing, we were able to increase it to two hundred and forty-six thousand. I do know of a few things that we may need to touch that this year that are coming up. I, I still feel very comfortable, you know, between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand. So it sits there as a placeholder, but it's available to spend based on official action from you gentlemen through a resolution process. I think what's helped us with a two hundred thousand dollar contingency is I think we're getting more accurate over time with our budget building. I think there's more allowance for meeting managers' needs and goals when they're building their budgets to say, yeah, you know, let's, let's plug that in, let's see where we can go, and let's see if we can afford it. So I think all of those things have occurred to not hit contingency quite as big as we used to in the past. As far as salaries, right now, you know, we're, we're starting union negotiations. So I think right at this point in time, the, one of the only things we can do is just act like the contract remains in force through next fiscal year until something is decided. So right now, the contract in force has the steps, you know, the five percent steps, but then a COLA increase between one point five and three percent, which, you know, we all are hearing the news on how high CPI is going up, which, which turns into COLA. So I think it, it, it would be wise to create this budget with a three percent. Knowing that once negotiations are finalized and a contract is signed, then more work is done if needed. Any, any question or comments on that? Health insurance, you typically find out that number. I think there's a conference at the end of February.
Yeah, the last week of February.
And, and so we'll be able to build that with what that estimate is. Insurance goes up in December for premiums that are paid for the January timeframe. So it's, it hits our fiscal year for only half of the year. From what I'm hearing, there were a lot of health insurance costs last year, you know. So it seems like there was a lot of health insurance or a lot, a lot of things that didn't occur for people healthcare-wise, but then what did occur was costing. And so I kind of roughly plug in a five percent, but I, I don't know. We'll find out at the end of February what that number actually will be. Questions about that?
For me?
So as far as general fund, materials and services, about four years ago, during a, a budget process, I, I suggested that we really look closely at what the actual amounts had been for four or five years prior and make sure that what we were budgeting was in line with that. I kind of, it, it's kind of budget creep sometimes when we, we kind of plan for materials and services and certain expenditures, but then they don't occur, but we continue to copy that number over year after year. So every now and then, I think it's wise to look and say, okay, what are we actually spending here? Make sure that, that budget number is in line. And if that doesn't work for a manager, let's talk about it and see what the need is, you know, what is going to happen, what is the plan for that next fiscal year. Since we did that four or five years ago, I think it's worked well, so I'm okay copying over a number this year unless you would like another process. I'm okay just copying over it. And then managers still have the opportunity to go through everything. They look through their budgets and, and change what they need to throughout that whole process. But just to build it is kind of easy for them almost in a way of like, plug in a number, just change what you need to change, everything else kind of remains the same. That's all I can say this year. Okay. Specific reserves. Oregon budget law allows municipalities to establish one or more reserve funds to hold monies to be accumulated and expended for financing the cost of any service, project, property, or equipment, which we have the lawful power to perform. Not less than every tenth anniversary of the reserve establishment date, the governing body should determine whether the fund will be continued or abolished. So instead of having a formal meeting to go through every reserve fund that we set aside, I try to use this meeting and our budget meetings to say, yes, these reserve funds are established and we want to continue them. So I don't really look at that ten-year anniversary necessarily. Just through our process, make sure that we are clear that we are continuing reserves that we have established for the same purposes. So general fund supports a few different reserves. They don't, the, the expenditure doesn't necess, it doesn't reside, well, some of these do now reside in general fund. Most of them reside in Fund One oh three, where we spend capital project money and have these reserves set aside. So the first one we talked about is facilities reserves, which is really, really broad, but it's set aside for, you know, at one point in time, we're setting aside money for this building for like if we had to do a roof replacement or, um, but it can be for any county facility that we feel may need work done in the future and we're just saving up to get it done. It also can be there if an emergency happens. And now we do have that event where we need to tax some money that wasn't necessarily budgeted to be expended, but we haven't set aside. So we've got a hundred thousand dollars set there. I don't know if we want to maintain that or consider increasing it, but that's the amount that's set aside currently. Last year, we were able to increase the Fairbord Roping Club facility to ten thousand dollars. I had donations from maybe a long time ago, totaled about forty-eight hundred, but through our process last year, we increased that to ten thousand.
So is that the Neil Flynn area?
Well, the Neil Flynn area, don't they already use that? I mean, that's.
Yeah, but that's not, the roping club and that's two different things.
Yeah, so this was, this was money provided, like I said, a long, long time ago, I think for the hopes of an indoor roping facility. And obviously, forty-eight hundred dollars didn't get us very far. Right, right, but ten thousand dollars is probably not even going to get us very far, but it's a start.
And that was money that was specifically donated for this purpose?
Yes, it was. The onsite program reserve of ten thousand dollars is actually a DEP requirement for our septic system program. So we are required to set aside those dollars in case we were to give that program back to the state. They have a pot of money to start inspecting our sewer systems, so, and septic systems.
Got a question.
Got a question, yes. Uh, technology upgrade. We have done quite a few general fund technology upgrades the last few years with big software purchases for the assessor's office, for the treasure department and the business services department. Continue to kind of make headway, I think, on server replacements. I'm not sure if there's other things that are coming down the road for technology upgrades. So Melanie might have information on perhaps increasing that reserve or what?
So with that one, so like, would we need an update on all of our radar, not radar, our antenna sites, whatever, their fault? Does that come out of the communications or?
What about, uh, the card lock for getting into buildings and stuff, the upgrades we did?
That's a facility one. That one's fine. We were able to upgrade the software instead of doing all the hardware. So I think we're good for a while on that.
That came out of facilities?
Um, I think I used my project budget for most of that because we weren't anticipating that server to go down. And I feel like it was of good use of our IT money.
So what about, um, card for the annex?
That's a facility thing. He said he can net sort that into his budget. And they should, I'll talk to Dave, but I think they'll have that project finished Tuesday.
I think the reserve for technology is when we know, like, okay, in, in four or five years, we're going to have to buy this new software, you know, like the assessor's office did, like we did. So I think it's.
Yeah.
Or like, we actually did set aside some money last year for Stacy's voting machine. She was able to get one a lot sooner, a lot cheaper than she planned on. So, so I think it's things like that, technology, equipment, things like that for.
What about the cashier's office for laptops for the deputies?
So we were able to replace some of those with COVID money, didn't we?
Yeah, we used C R M for those. Um, he's going to build a line item into his budget for the anticipated replacement of those and start cycling them through. He's got all of his equipment right now, from my understanding.
So we don't have to buy a whole bunch of them all at once?
Yeah, so he is going to include that this year and start building out savings because he knows he will have a specific purchase in the future.
Kevin, you and I have spoken a little bit about this card system or with fuel, the fuel system out of the road department. Where are you with that?
Um, our, our fuel system is incredibly antiquated. We can't get replacement parts. We've gone safari and we've supplied parts off the day from. But all of those are exhausted. We don't, can't get the cars anymore, the actual carbon readers. And right now, two, two of the facilities that I have fuel stored at, the card locks themselves are done. They're no, they're no good. We have to actually access those with a manually.
Yeah, through other means.
And then document the fuel on paper in a file, but it's, we can't do electronic anymore. So we are trying to investigate what options are available for a new system that can communicate with the IRS system so we can also track the cost of everything.
It's something that we'll just kind of keep on our radars, a potential purchase for the last year or next year, most likely.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know, other than our own road facilities, what is available for us to utilize to pay for that, but I'm sure it won't be cheap.
So years ago, before the card and electronic stuff came out, the card locks had, you had an individual key for unlocking. And then it kept a tally of the individual employees. You still had to write it down, but they had a key to fuel. You know, maybe the cheapest way would be to go back to the old way, but, I mean, because those things are so expensive, plus card readers and.
So the two, the two that are active that we actually can hook up to and read are the one in Lakeview and the one in Christmas Valley. Fort Rock tanks have fuel in them and so does Silver Lake. But we transfer that ourselves with fuel truck in bulk so that we can keep track of the actual meter reading off the fuel truck to know exactly what. We know what went in because we bought it and we know what comes out because of the fuel truck. But that fuel was purchased last, well, before the politics changed and all the fuel prices went up. We experienced very, very little cost, so we stopped everything full then. But the cost of the idea, the cost of replacing a car readers, we, I, I still haven't actually gotten a hard estimate or an official quote on what that all will cost.
So the next line is that communications reserve. So we were able to increase that amount in, in anticipation of, I thought we've done the amount. I thought we've done the amount, we talked with Peters recently, so it was the other equipment.
That's the name I get.
Yeah, antennas. I think there's other equipment needs there for um. That big communication system and network, I'm not, I can't remember exactly what's next, but. We did set aside money uh for the repairs this last year. We'll probably get more information on that, so unless someone knows something right now, um, maybe we just keep it at that number until. The fleet reserve is uh. Thirty thousand set aside to replace a vehicle in the event that something catastrophic happens during the course of the fiscal year. So we have to go through some public notification process to release the reserve dollars, but then there would be funding set aside to get us. A replacement i- in the event something significantly happened. I'm not sure thirty thousand dollars covers most of our vehicles now.
Like we could even get a used vehicle for that.
I don't know, so that we might, we might throw out a number there that you'd like to see that set at instead of thirty thousand. Or you keep it there, just keeping your fingers crossed it. We don't have the catastrophic happen and we have other vehicles that we can kind of roll down the line for the pool use.
I'm thinking we need to change that, I might myself, but it doesn't have to be significant though, break it to forty five, okay? You know, the communications thing and the microwaves, those are not cheap.
Yeah.
I reread uh some information on spits and stuff that we got. We need four microwaves for a hundred thousand piece. So that's a big number.
Um, we have, I believe there was, was it homeland security dollars that are available for some of that? That we probably need to research.
Start.
I know.
We got, we gotta look for other avenues, I'm not saying this is the route to need, but.
But.
But if something goes down and we can't communicate.
Should we increase it now? Yeah. Do you want to increase it?
Yeah, I mean. How much do you think it?
Well, anything less than a hundred thousand still does bite your microwave, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can take some risk there too, I mean, you can move up to eighty. Uh, what do you guys think?
Well, if it costs us a hundred grand to replace one, we probably should have a hundred grand.
Go ahead and bump it up to a hundred grand, like, just need a hundred, if we need to make adjustments later on, we can. Um, depending on where we find ourselves.
Okay, so I have um a list of some other ideas that have been floated around, and this might not be a total list of ideas, but. One of the first things that comes to mind that could potentially save the money, it did, it would save the county a significant amount of money going forward. Is the PERS employer incentive fund, uh that was very successful, uh very used throughout the state for different employers. And because that is in law through a new, um, it's actually through sports betting. It looks like it will become available again in twenty twenty-three, but at a much lesser sized program. So the reason it. The the reason we want to use that incentive fund is they match our money uh to a certain amount. So we're getting free money off of the lottery system instead of solely buying down our liability with our own dollars. So. Be- because it's, it's, in fact, the news is very likely that it'll come out in twenty twenty-three. I do think we should set aside money and have it available for us so that the minute we know it's there. We push it and and we're kind of locked in, and again, it's the free money, uh free money, but the money from the state that helps us find out our liability. That makes us so important, uh and so positive for us. Um, if we, I think like a couple of years ago when this came out. The state, I think our cap, if I remember right, we were gonna put in a million, the state would match that about three hundred thousand. I, and, but they had, Jay, remind me, they had oh sixty million or almost a hundred million dollars that they were going out on that round.
Yeah, around a hundred million.
So what I'm seeing now is the next round's gonna be about twenty-five million, so if if we just, you know, scale that all down. You know, maybe they can only match us to the tune of a hundred thousand, which means we might be only able to put in. Three hundred to five hundred thousand, I'm not sure, but I want to have. It it is so popular, the minute they say go, I mean, you literally are online hitting enter, trying to get your application in. So you get in on that cutoff, so.
So. Is the application prepared already, so also we gotta do this push button?
No, but it will be.
Um, and I guess what we need to talk about where we're gonna get that money too. We've talked before about the water fund and then paying them back with it going interest rate, is that still?
No, I would, I would push the white money dollars.
Okay.
Absolutely push the white money dollars on this one.
Okay. So it'll come out of the white money?
So it'll come out of the general fund. Yeah.
But what if this comes out before the white money dollars?
Well, it's, from what I see, it'll come out the next, like it, so the biennium goes twenty-one, twenty-three. So we're in that biennium right now, so I think it's the start of the twenty-three, twenty-five biennium is when we'll see this come out, so I think we're good. Setting aside some white money dollars in this next fiscal year, in the event it comes out in December of twenty-three. Okay. Have, like, I guess I'm just kind of throwing out numbers here because I haven't. Cause we don't know for sure exactly what their pot of money for the incentive fund will be. Like I said, early, early communications might be around twenty-five million. So I I would hope that we could set aside anywhere from five hundred thousand to seven hundred fifty thousand on this. This incentive fund.
Just so we're ready to go.
Mm-hmm.
Because that saves us a lot of money.
Oh, and it saves, it saves this.
What, what are we talking about?
Well, it buys, so. It reduced, it reduced some employers' uh PERS rates, God, their uh, their UAL, their unfunded actuarial liability. One employer reduced it by seventy-two percent, which is amazing, but the average was about six percent, which, you know. Oh, Jay, help me out, what was our rate? Our rate was going down. They, they estimated our rate was going down, I thought anywhere between five and seven percent a year, or the duration of our liability.
Well, the opportunity we had, was it a year ago or two years ago?
Two, two years.
Um, if we had participated in that, we could, we would have put a hundred thousand toward, or. They would have paid three hundred thousand, we, we would have paid, put a million toward it, they would have paid three hundred thousand, that's free money. Over the ten years that we paid that back, we would, we would have saved about a million dollars.
Right.
Think, is that what your question, Mark?
So over a ten year period?
Yeah, over a ten year period, um, and and that's when it's gonna pay back, cause it's gonna lower our rates over that long period of time.
Off the top, like right now, our PERS rate is at, what, twenty?
Well, depending on the tier, anywhere from eighteen to twenty-seven.
Fourteen, twenty-seven, so.
So we're expecting up to seven fifty from white money in one year, another seven fifty in another year.
Yeah, actually, it's gonna be much higher than that, early projections showed our county allocation about three point five million per year.
Okay, so one, a year.
Yeah, so we're only gonna get that two years, so.
One point seven, one point seven or so.
Three point five, three point five.
Three point five, three point five.
Yes.
Well, that makes a big difference.
Yeah.
I thought we were three point five total.
Yeah.
No, it's uh, it's the amount that they, it's one point five billion for two years, so seven hundred and fifty million a year. Which is more nationwide than the PIL payment. And then the way they're distributing it goes um further than PIL does in national population cap. So we actually get the benefit of our acres. Um, and other socioeconomic factors that got rolled into it too, so early estimates, but I hate, I. It makes me nervous to actually.
Count those chickens before you go.
Yeah. Yeah, because all, all that's happened right now is I, and I have that draft formula, Todd Devlin from Montana, we are one. Like talking it all through and and looking at numbers and going through it all. Both NACO and WIR have said, yeah, we we agree with this, how this calculation is rolling out. But Treasury has not taken the time to. Go through it from their end and actually formalize that.
Cause they've been dealing with COVID.
Yes, and I don't think they have any, they don't, the Treasury's not under the same push that like PIL gets under. For a June payment for counties, so Treasury's just looking at, oh, we just need to get this out by the end of the federal fiscal year, which will be in September. That's why I'm thinking we may not see it until next fall.
Well, I would support somewhere in that range of five hundred and seventy fifty from white money. Uh, wait, you guys, yeah. Still gives us some flexibility with other things. It saves us money even a little bit.
Oh, same just a tremendous amount of money going on, I mean. For, for a really long time in acquisition at the county, our biggest benefit cost was health insurance. But the last two biennium changes with the rate change was for PERS, it's in PERS, so for a long time it was health insurance, but now it's. It's right up there, I think the last, uh, like I said, last budget year, for every dollar in salaries we're spending, we're spending, what is it, fifty-eight cents? In benefits, it's really, it's really high. So anything we can do to buy that liability down from PERS and get that rate down saves us. The next um specific reserve that I know has been kind of floating around and getting talked about is like the fairgrounds, engineering plans, building match. Again, with the white money, this might be a good opportunity for us to set aside some what I consider one-time dollars for a one-time purpose. Uh, so I don't know where. What, what dollar do you want to throw in there? There's a lot of, lot of range there, so.
Yeah, so just to give, you probably already know, give everyone an update, we were going to. Put in for an EDA grant and. About the time we're gonna pull the trigger, they said if we don't have the plans done, the engineering and the planning done. That they don't look at it, so tonight, of course, is a fair board meeting. Um, we're gonna discuss what our next step is, and what I believe, my personal opinion is, is that. Our next step needs to be the planning and the engineering of the indoor arena, so we can get that home. Um. We have to, I'm gonna stay on this like a dog on a bone, so we have to have. We have to have some kind of reserve here because um. The fairgrounds have been neglected as far as maintenance, firstly since the nineteen forties when we bought it. Or, but the, what we have now, and so. If we're gonna make that place shine, we're gonna have to pay. Of course, we'll continue to get grants, but we need to have, have match money, we have to have planning and engineering money. And, um. So. Otherwise, we're gonna be putting lipstick on a pig from now on, so.
It's the same issue with broadband, plans and engineering, we're never gonna get off the schneid if we don't invest into something.
And that's probably something we need to add to. You know, I mean, um, cause you're exactly right, Commissioner, we have to have that done, and so. Since I've been working on it so hard, I don't want to throw out a number, I want you guys to throw out a number, um. What do we got to work with? We got more white money coming and. I'll find out next week at the OFA if we're gonna get that two hundred and sixty some thousand. Um. I'm hearing a little bit of pushback from other commissioners that they wanted it left how it was. Which would, some big projects would be getting done in other counties, cause we don't have our planning and engineering done. And they would get that ten million dollars, um. I'm hoping that's not how it goes, because we'll be out. And so. I'm trying to do catch up on some of this stuff, and so. You know, engineering and planning is not cheap, so whether it be broadband or the fairgrounds or anything else, so.
Um, this is, just a ball and a half a million each, you know, for, for engineering and planning. Between broadband and then, you know, two hundred million, I think.
Uh, that would be my, my suggestion also.
So what, yeah, we'll keep, we'll keep.
I mean, I, I hopefully we wouldn't have to use all that, obviously, for the engineering and planning, you know, depending on, you know, our scope. Uh, I, I kind of feel like we need to get some engineering taken place and some planning for Lake County's broadband side, for sure. Um. You know, we've been working with climate, show it, to try and see if we can do, join Lake County, climate county vision. My personal feeling is that we just need to maybe take them with the Lake Counties, um, just thinking out loud here.
Great.
And go ahead and we can apply for Lake County.
I think we have a conclusion to that, yeah. And these uh still will be here on Thursday, we'll have the individual discussion, we can each visit with it.
So yeah, uh, that'd just be a good starting place for us, we'll figure out how realistic those numbers actually are as we go forward.
Right. Um, other project match, I, the, the other one that comes to mind right at the moment, and I should have actually. Put it down officially, but if we are successful with the Connect Oregon grant, that will be a four hundred thousand dollar match in the middle. So.
Everything else, just like put towards project that.
So I don't know if we need to uh. You know, we had, we had anticipated a, somewhere in that neighborhood of a match on the Chrissy grant, but now that the state has come through with dollars.
Yeah.
Um. Help, I mean, that wealth, I mean, they're working on coming through with the dollars, they were worried and they just have to change it from Arthur to something else, but. We had, we had planned to spend about that much money on the Chrissy grant, so now I think it's available, hopefully for the Connect Oregon grant if we.
I'm gonna bring up, it just sparked my memory on something, so on our meeting today, with Senator Vindley, he brought up. Monies that we've gotten, for like the town of Lakeview, the fifteen million, Lakeview hasn't filled out that form yet. Um, and Barry, you're the liaison kind of with them, would you?
Would I mind what?
Would you mind, remind them that they have to fill out that form to get the fifteen?
That's in the paper, you know?
Yeah, but I mean, just. Because I, they can't get the money without filling out that form, and so, sorry, that just sparked my memory on that. And, and yes, it is in the paper, but.
Speaking of that, did, did Lindham do all the paperwork on our behalf for his chunk of that money?
The first round of money?
Mm-hmm.
Do not know.
Okay, but, but they're not contacting us, saying those, that, those project intake forms are.
No, we, it's, Lindham did reach out to us, wanted to know about additional capital improvement projects.
Okay.
But um, I believe all that other stuff is. But I believe all that other stuff is.
So just for.
Gave us a short, very short time. We got the, we got the email at four thirty Saturday. And ended it by three o'clock yesterday.
Just, just so we are clear.
He sent the email at two fifty four, I believe.
It was four thirty. Because I looked.
Yeah, okay.
And that's why I gave it Sunday.
Yeah, well, I think it was supposed to be in by three or something, I thought, but.
Anyways.
Just, just to kind of be clear to you. The dollars that are going to be available to Lake County in the next few years. Are, you know, all from pandemic response from the government. Some, the widened dollars can be for general government purpose. Some of these dollars we're talking about are specific. Um, broadband water facilities. Um, we're hoping for more.
For underperables.
Yep, and we're hoping for more flexibility, but I wanna, I wanna make sure that, that, that's clear, cause it sounds like we're flinging around a lot of money. Some of them, we have to fling towards certain. Improvement projects, or it's easier to throw it towards certain improvement projects than others. So even the broadband money, um, you know, we've talked about our ARPA dollars going one way, but I think. I don't know, there's still other, there's still maybe some ARPA dollars through other avenues that can. On this too. Just that we bring that.
Quick, quickly going back to the capital improvements that's gonna happen in this short session, um. Rep Owens is working on. A project with Jim Strong and Northlake to try to get them, um, one hundred and fifty, I believe. Yeah, new, new meters, um, for the Christmas Valley Water Project. Mr. Schuylord Burton's been also working with Rep Owens on our North. Lakeview Water Project. And then. I had Sharon Mighty help me with on Sunday to get the response to Lithicon. Um, and I already had all the number, we already had all the numbers for the fairgrounds. For that EDA grant, so we firstly. Transferred that into the capital improvement form and sent that off yesterday, yesterday, yes. And so those are the projects that. We specifically did as a county. Jim Strong, actually, on the North, on the Christmas Valley, he actually sent a. Email to Mark Owens and they got that going themselves and so. Thankful for that. Anyways.
All right, so are there other? More, a lot going on, but is there anything that comes to mind that we haven't discussed that we need to kind of make a mental note of or? Or plan for? We have a lot of big projects that we're supporting in several different ways, but.
I think we can anticipate that our cost in that one are gonna be higher.
Yes.
Possibly double.
At least.
That's something we've anticipated.
Yeah.
And so we're, so we're definitely. We're, we're working hard on the broadband, that's gonna be, I mean, that is coming. Hopefully, we get some of that broadband money that's supposed to be coming. And then. Christmas Valley Water Project and the Paisley Water Project, which we're talking about tomorrow. Those are stuff that needs to be done, how we made it the money. But those are like the push, really pushing. Important things, I believe, is the broadband and the two water project.
So. Speaking of, uh. You know, reconnect, or what is it, uh? Broadband. Grand County Communications got back to us and said that they want to not submit. The Lake County portion of the plan. For this due date that's coming up here in February. For reasons that, uh. You know, there's, there's some complications, uh, cultural and whatnot, that may be a problem at following highway three ninety five. So they're gonna look into that further. So, but when we had the discussions with the town about putting in. Uh, application fee money, that will be delayed to the next opportunity, which will be later this summer.
Oh, okay, so it's sooner than I thought, okay.
So it wasn't, what was it, thirty thousand commitment from us? Uh. We'll see where that goes, okay? And, and you know, things can, plans can change and whatnot, but that thirty thousand is not gonna be asked from us right away, so. And we also possibly had support from, let's go ahead, come up with that much. So that wasn't gonna be our dollars anyway.
Okay, cause go ahead, Sydney wants to, like, from Rashki, that, Kenny, A, it can go to some of these things too, right?
It can still only be split some of the ways.
Gotcha, okay.
It, it's gotta be, Rashkeys can only be split twice according to the state.
Yeah.
And.
That's right.
There's some other restrictions.
That's right, yeah.
And.
Yeah, okay.
It's gotta be South Lake County and it can't be Chalk here, which is ridiculous, which is very bizarre, right?
Yeah.
I, hey, he gave us the five hundred thousand, I'm gonna honor his wishes, so.
Okay, okay. Anything, anything else on, on those? Those points. Okay, admin fee calculations. So in your packet is a kind of a rough draft of what they look like. For twenty two, twenty three, using our policy. Um, and then using actual dollars spent from twenty twenty one. And using actual device counts in time from IT. I don't know if you guys have had time to look at that.
I think I left mine in my office.
I'm gonna make a copy for you.
Hey, let's take a three minute, or something. I'll always have the, I have ten.
He says you have, like, a half a staff and a laptop that he, that's issued to you guys.
Oh, that's for the APG thing.
So our, you know, to beat this dead horse. Our policy, um, allocates certain. Things that general fund pays for that, that is used countywide for operations or services or, you know. So county services is where we house, um, expenditures such as the audit, the budget build, uh, paper. Certain copier contracts, um. Postage, just like really kind of general county services that anyone can access. That is very, very difficult to. Allocate on, 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 on use or, so it is really just like. Does, does this seem fair? Like, does this seem fair and reasonable? Is, is this a, a? That, I don't even know how to, how to get that to be more accurate, that's what that is.
So, and according to the law, it's either. We split it up like you've done here with formula, correct? Or we don't do it at all, or we charge everybody the same price. That, that's the three choices, correct?
I don't, I'm not sure charging everybody the same price meets the federal guideline. Does it? I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
I thought, I thought that's how it is. We charge every department the same price, we use a formula, or we don't charge them at all. And I might be off on that, but. You know. We're all working for the same outfit virtually. I realize that. This is a lot of work to go through what we've done. Some departments heads don't like it. Um, because they feel like they're paying more than their first share. My thought is if, if we can just make it, this is your administrative fee. Everybody pays the same amount. It would make things a lot simpler to me.
Can everybody pay that though?
That's, I mean, but, but the thing is, is that. Say, say that Jake's department has to pay five thousand bucks more. We just swap that money. To each department. So we don't have this, cause it's, it's every year, we have the same discussion and beating a dead horse. It's either we charge him, everybody the same. We leave it at that. Or we don't charge him at all and. Cause this, this is a lot of work and people are not feeling they're treated right, some people are getting away with stuff. It's all the same to me, I mean.
If you charge everyone the same, then you're really gonna have departments feeling like they're not being treated fairly. You're gonna have the.
I guess, I guess my whole deal with the whole thing is.
I know.
We're one county. This throws in like we're separated. And you see what I'm saying? I mean, I just feel like. It's, it's like our fathers, we all work for our father. And you gotta pay your certain amount to do business. It's all going to the same spot.
But it's not paid with the same dollars, that's the difference.
Doesn't come with the same dollars, yeah.
So if, if you do not charge at all, you're saying, hey, Lake County citizens, you're going to bear the brunt for providing every single service in the county. Whether the federal government pays for it, it, and it wouldn't even matter. Now it's just all on the Lake County citizens to pay every service that we do administratively.
Because you have a lot of state and federal programs.
Yeah. Yes.
So. We got a bunch of our department heads here, what's the solution? I mean, because we do this every year, people get their nosepin out of shape. And I don't want that anymore. I don't want division amongst our department heads, I'm over.
There's no reason for anybody to get their nosepan out of shape. It's not their money, it's county's money. It's, uh, all we're trying to do here is make this. And the whole purpose of budgeting is to make it representative. So that some, the public can look at our budgets and say, this is how much it costs to run, to operate our road department or our business services. That's the whole purpose here. It's not about money and us paying more and, you know what I mean?
I don't know if you're ever going to find a formula that's, or a formula that's going to make everyone happy. And, and you're right, I mean, every year we do go through this and we have this conversation, but to a certain extent, maybe it's okay that we have that conversation every year. Um, it kind of helps us keep it on track and if we can kind of work through some of those problems that we're having them. Um, to try and find something that's fair for everyone. Because, you know, maybe one year it's, it's perfectly fine and there's another year where we see a large increase or something and we. We sit down, we talk about it and work through the problems. I don't know if there's a way to completely avoid that, no matter what formula we choose. But I do think that regardless of whatever issues come up over the admin fee, I think we can work through it. And I think we can find a solution. The formula that we have, it's, it's not perfect, but it's working pretty well and, uh. It's just one of those things. I think iron sharpens iron, so I don't, I don't know if I have a really particular problem with, you know, revisiting this every year. As long as we can do a civilly.
Okay, so I think some of the historic concerns of this stems from where the dollars start. We're, road department, and I'll just speak to road department, isn't funded by general fund, there's no dollars. So my question is. This admin fee of some of these general funds paying an admin fee, doesn't, doesn't it start with property tax, general fund money to begin with?
But we're providing the road department some services.
I'm not asking about the road department, I'm asking the dollars that are listed on this form that are paid to an admin fee. From a general fund account or a budget, does it not start with the general fund to begin with?
Right, it starts with, if, if they are, they are services that, um, either by ORS or by county decision. Are in place that serve countywide programs. So if, if we were just, if these departments were just doing general fund work. It wouldn't, the cost wouldn't be as high.
Okay, so they start with general fund dollars.
Yep.
As the roads department superintendent, our dollars don't start as general fund dollars. They are gas tax and registration, paid to the courthouse for services that we utilize. We can all agree on that, it's not, that's not complicated to understand.
No, it's not.
But complication comes in where. Department heads, including myself. Start to evaluate how much of those services and what the true cost is.
Right.
For instance, and I'm gonna use this paper right now as an example. Twelve thousand dollars listed for computers. In a real life setting. If I paid twelve thousand dollars. To a group outside of local government, we were not local government. I would expect I'd get twelve thousand dollar worth of computers.
Is it computers or is it computer service? No idea.
Service, it's for allocated based on time that our person allocates to their department. He keeps a track record of his work orders and then they average it. And it does have some equipment, but it's mostly just time allocated to there.
So it's a retainer. We're, we're paying for a percentage retained on, on the contract of computer services for the county, that's what that is.
And then there's also, like, whether it's email, Microsoft Office, um. Things that connect to our server, the, the maintenance of your server, firewalls. You know, that.
Okay, so the firewall, I mean, we can get as specific as we want. We had a flood event two winters ago. And we ended up paying for all of that equipment out of, out of pocket, if you will. It didn't come from this, it wasn't paid for from these dollars. We paid on top. So all I'm saying is that if you stop and look at it from that perspective. As a boss, as a department head, you go, hmm, where are these dollars going? It's only human nature to ask that question when you're in charge of managing the dollar amount. As far as everybody, this is just my personal theory. I don't know how you would in an organization like this where budgets are from one extreme to the next as far as working dollars, as far as balance. How everybody would be able to pay the same thing, cause there, there's, there's accounts that literally couldn't pay for it, right? We don't, we don't know that, so.
Well, that, that, I think that's the ORS, but I'm not positive on that, I'd have to look.
But I guess, I guess there has to be some kind of fluctuation from year to year based on what. Each department is doing. And just, and I use IT as an example because I like to beat on IT, I'll be the first to raise my hand and say that. I don't need a computer to work on the road, I absolutely do not. So I'll beat up IT as an example here.
But in fact, yes, you do.
I'm not gonna argue that, I'm gonna use this as an example.
Okay.
If, if the sheriff's department is trying to budget for a huge amount of IT equipment versus the road department. Then their services naturally, as by percentage of ratio, should be higher in that specific year. So as a department head, you would look down across there and go, oh, okay, they apparently are doing more. That's logical. But when you see the opposite take place, that's when you have to say, where's these dollars going? Does that make sense?
Is there someone that, I'm sure there is. Is there some way that I'm sure there is technology wise. That we can keep track of everybody's use on.
We do. You keep track of licensing like I brought up, server costs, ticket time.
Well, let's 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 use an example. Let's say IT helps the commissioners. In this fiscal year. To a level that's higher than the. So is are we gonna build a budget that's reactionary and then build the next year to bill commissioners line? To make up for the previous year? I mean, how do you plan for that?
The only way to do it is to track your times throughout the year and do it on the last day. Real fast.
So what what Josh provides me is an a breakdown that looks at staff. Servers, firewalls, buffaloes, switch, PC desktops and laptops, copiers, printers, scanners. Phones that are connected to, you know, that are connected to our network. Emails, software programs, cloud software programs, other equipment, security cameras, and then the security certificates. He then looks at that and goes, okay, it it takes me literally no time to maintain a phone line. So he really discounts that cost of service to a phone line. On the on the flip side, it takes him a lot of time to maintain a server. A lot of not a lot of technical time to maintain a server. So he weights that heavily. And he he puts it through this spreadsheet. So I'll take a copy of this and give it to you. Comes comes out and then it it's like, here's the total devices, here's the weighted support. And then I use that that. Weight, I mean, the weighted support that goes into this spreadsheet to filter through their costs. The costs that we start with are the actuals from the year before, so yes. If if the following year, we don't have as many projects, we're not replacing as many desktops, we don't have to do a lot of work on. Firewalls and servers and things like that, the overall cost of the IT department goes down, there's less allocated the next year all across the board. So. I don't I don't know how to, so he is in effect tracking it all up. He knows it takes some more time to like maintain certain aspects of our IT than other things. This year, he actually took into account. More equipment that we have attached to our servers than than before. The sheriff's department, as we spoke about, has significant costs. And so this year you can see their IT is sixty thousand dollars a year. They have, there's a lot of equipment.
What's your total IT cost?
The total IT cost is three hundred and thirty thousand. Okay, and that's that's our soft, like our our Microsoft Office software, our email software, our email backup, our IT contract. And the replacement of desktops and laptops on this schedule. Um, also like some of the, I don't know if there was a server, phone lines, security cameras. Um, the card entry things, all all kinds of things are supported there through IT. So I don't, yeah, it's high, it's a high number. But today and today's world.
That's what's made it around business.
Yeah, today's world, everything is ends up being done through a computer or is required to at some point in time. And then we have to back it up. We gotta save it. We have to have it available and archive records down the road. I have a plan with counties here. I was tasked with looking at other counties. And and they're 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 my close easy one to go to. They allocate over three million dollars in admin fees. Not not really even comparable to us, but they do it along the same lines. They allocate county council, finance, IT, GIS. And then HR. So. Their public works department pays three hundred and ninety thousand. Their sheriff's department is um. Four hundred and ninety one. Community corrections, like two hundred thousand. They allocate very similar to the way we do kind of the same departments. They have a few different factors that come in. Employee counts, you know, human resource percentages. Multimedia allocations, I feel, they look at a few different things. So.
Well. What you're saying and how you're describing like the example of just the computer line. It sounds like uh, it's, oh, there's a lot of factors taken into account there. Unless somebody has a significant. Factor or reason why they think their their line is out of line. I don't know that you can figure it hardly any other way. So. Okay, let's move on, cause if we could beat that horse first.
Kill that horse again. So the last thing on the memo just gives me some guidance. Which this year maybe not, won't even become a factor. Just gives me guidance. Because I'm required to present to you a balanced budget when we start our meetings. So the these next topics, just tell me where to balance to first. Um, with the white dollars, it makes it a whole lot easier. But when it comes right down to it. Um, I like to kind of have a order of preference of where I go. What do I reduce first based off of these goals and projections? Where do I reduce first if I need to to balance general fund? So last few years, we've kind of done it in this order. First is contingency. Um, second is the fund, the transfers to fund reserves, which you know, we have those reserve targets and other project things. Third thing would be the transfers to fund operations. Uh, general fund supports several of their funds um in their operations. And then the fourth thing, which you know, comes up periodically, but I don't think it'll come up this year is materials and services. So is there any any change in that preference of order of how I balance general fund? When it comes down to it.
I'm good with those priorities. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. I'm good with those priorities. Just those those are four.
Like I said, this year I don't think it'll be, you know.
Yeah. Hopefully you'll have to go down to materials and services.
Have hopefully. Yeah, as if I do one wrong, I don't know what's forward.
So we didn't give you numbers on the assumptions.
Kind of assume since there was no number thrown out to maintain what what we have there unless someone has something different. So I have a million dollars on the appropriated funding allowance, two hundred thousand in contingency. A three percent uh COLA, materials and services will just be copied over. And then the specific reserves stayed as stated, except for the communications reserve, the fleet reserve. And then the new thing we talked about, the first employer incentive fund, fairgrounds, railroad and broadband. Does that capture it?
Everything can, everything's still up for change.
Oh, yeah. No, so that's the thing is remember, yeah, this is just assumptions. It just gives me.
Those are the assumptions.
You know, consensus on building the uh general fund budget. And then the the budget really hits the paper when we meet in April. A budget meeting dates April nineteenth, April twenty first. Um, and that's where the formal decision will start taking place on actual line item amounts and specific analysis.
One concern or thought that I do have is on the materials and services. Materials are extremely more expensive. Virtually everywhere. So that's something that we need to be thinking about up to four hundred percent if you can find them. And. Just a concern.
So that's, you know, I'm hopeful managers can really evaluate. All their their fuel, their their purchases of supplies and and make sure. They account for how costly things are. Well, well, Kevin's here. I have one. Kind of, I wanna understand, one clarification on school schools that got reauthorized. Email that came out that said. Due to the timeline of legislation, they're keeping an eighty twenty split between title one and title two. So our allocation used to be eighty five fifteen. So I I'm, are we really going to be faced with an eighty twenty? Is that how I read that? Without, so what we did is we had eighty five title one, which is roads and schools. And then the fifteen percent, we got to split between title two, which is RAC projects and title three, which is. Operations on forested lands, emergency response, firewise communities, things like that. And so of that fifteen, our allocation was twelve percent to title two and three percent to title three. So on an eighty twenty, I'm not sure how they're.
Were we being told to do that?
So I thought that email that you received was that the timeline has already passed. For them to gather the allocation information from counties. And so they're looking at an eighty twenty, which was the original, probably the original language of the law. What what when was that? Two thousand and?
Well.
Two?
I don't see why, we we don't have a need for change.
No, so I'm hoping we get to maintain what it was in place. So it's the eighty five fifteen. Okay, have you seen anything more on that?
They they did, they sent me the, uh, I I I didn't think very quickly, but they didn't, it it was the same as it always is.
Okay, okay, so I don't know what.
That came from, that came from AOC, from Lake, from Oasis Road Program.
Right.
Well, and also it goes, it like they kind of, which was great, they backed it up to two thousand seventeen. And so the five percent step down, you know, like the number, the allocation is handled up.
Uh, I I remember like one point six and one point six on the sheet paper for specifically for roads, but.
Okay.
Um, I don't. I didn't see anything um that came to us from um.
Who's that email that you forwarded on on uh?
And I didn't see a deadline or a response that I really think that it was worth of you.
And I filed it through the force service. Well, let's keep our ears open if if it's possible.
I can ask Brian, I can ask Brian what he knows, but he he would have sent that to us. I.
Okay. Well, this was news to me, the what you had sent out from, and it came through the force service, what you had sent out on. Is it almost more specific to title two RAC?
Yeah, that's what they booked.
But they were not, they were looking at title one versus title two allocations. And so I wanted to see what. What people here know.
So speaking of title three.
Yes.
Last year, we probably spent a ton of money out of title three because of the fires.
And some of it got reimbursed, we think, which was nice. But yes, yes, we did.
They've already reimbursed us for last year's fire?
No, for the Gavin fire.
Oh, so two years ago. Okay.
But we should get others.
We can, we made some reimbursement as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But yes, we just.
It was on title one and two dollars.
Yeah, so I was confused on that too, because title two dollars, we never even, we never even get possession of those. They stay at the either federal or state level for the RACs. The only dollars we are provide, you know, that are sent down to us at county level are the title one and the title three dollars. So that email is a little bit confusing to me on how.
Yeah, it says because the bill was signed in November, the result is the default allocation for the fiscal year twenty one. Eighty percent title one and twenty percent title two applies.
Which will affect us.
I'm not seeing a deadline.
Like I don't.
Well, with the percentages you just you just said is what she's talking about now, that's that's not what.
Yeah, the percentages are there.
I don't, we didn't, I didn't get that information through the roadside things.
We need to do some follow up then.
Yeah, because our our typical allocation is eighty five fifteen, so eighty twenty.
Yeah, see, under the, because see, the under the default payment, the secretary of agriculture can carry out projects in the eligible counties to further the purpose of title two like projects. No payment will be made for the title two activities. So this title two like money needs to remain in its own separate pot and should not be combined with any other funds.
Right, yeah. Definitely, yeah, definitely needs some follow up. We, like I said, we did, we don't get title two dollars.
Or not.
They take our allocation.
Very important.
From the.
Sent uh, it's sent it's uh, yeah.
So we'll follow, we'll follow up on that. We'll stay tuned.
Okay.
And also I don't know the timeline of that. I'm not sure if they're gonna kick that money out here in the next couple of months. I'm hoping so. That would be very helpful.
Thank you, man.
It came, it. It came on our forecast for the end to receive it before the end of this fiscal year. Um, and that's all, that's all I can budget by for myself.
Yeah.
Cause I, I need those, I need that dollar amount to understand what the beginning balance will be again, I'm getting it before July first or after July first. But the forecast that they gave us, that always including the road advisory back in.
You didn't see any huge fluctuation, a five percent difference or anything?
It was, it was hot, it's higher. Yeah, I mean, I think twenty seventeen, I thought it said in, is that what you said?
Mm-hmm, twenty seventeen, yes.
Yeah, it says, it says how it it reset funding amounts used to calculate the formula for these payments to the two thousand seventeen level.
Two thousand seventeen level, but I never read or saw on the information that I get from roadside things. That said anything about a different percentage of title one.
Right.
That there there, we didn't, they didn't send us anything like that.
Yes, see, this is eighty percent title one, twenty percent title two.
They said, but they say Congress is aware of the problem.
Oh, yeah, it created, they 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 do say that. I mean, because uh. Since since the bill was signed in to law in November, it created a problem with the funding allocations. And they they are aware of it.
So I guess something for you guys to kind of roll up to widen their workflow and say, hey. Drive.
We can definitely follow up.
Yeah.
We have to be speaking of Berkeley on Wednesday.
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay, so we're gonna move on along.
Thank you, thank you.
Chair.
You're right.
Thanks.
Mr. Greer, thank you, Ian.
Yes, I have a new development, please, mom. I have a contract extension between the Department of Corrections and Lake County, um, Community Justice. When coronavirus first kicked off. If you remember, I think before the board, because Department of Corrections was pulling back our transitional funding. Well, they reallocated that transitional funding under this Corona coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant. So they reallocated that money to us. But put some limitations on what we can use it for and novel projects and purposes. I mean, this agreement related to the housing. Non-coronavirus positive clients under the summer any supervision. And asked for folks releasing from the institution uh to be used only for client housing. So we have used a portion of that, um, the gentleman this last summer, this last fall. It's it's on really fall, get released and we rented a, um, executive van. Spent about fifteen, sixteen hundred bucks on that for three weeks. A lot of counties were in the same predicament we were. We didn't spend all of our money. So the Department of Corrections went back to um. The CSF program and asked for an extension to spend that amount. So stay alive and moving the expiration date from January nineteen twenty two to December thirty first twenty two. So they're just extending this twelve months to spend the money. We have some help coming out of the institution and we'll, we'll be able to spend money. It's twelve seventy five, so. So um. Again, just. The only thing that's changed is um, again, expiration date, some award period, performance starting end date. Started January twentieth of twenty twenty, and then it's supposed to expire January nineteenth twenty two, or they could extend that to December thirty first. Which you can find on page two, under number five of the top of the page.
Okay.
I'll be in Paisley tomorrow.
Okay, you're gonna be in Paisley tomorrow?
Yeah.
Good. Sounds good.
Kevin, did. Did you wanna talk about anything specific or are you just?
Uh, I came for a budget assumption, but I, I can give you, I have an update that actually is gonna include Jay a little bit too. On the bridges that we have had hit, so whatever.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and do that. You don't mind.
It'll, it, I don't, I don't need just a minute or two. So we've had, since the last bridge structure that we, um, had hit and worked through the. Jay worked through the insurance, um, process, we've had two, um, more similar, um, damages. One in Paisley on Mill Street and one on Pitcher Lane. If you can picture right where the asphalt turns to gravel, both of those bridges were hit, um, various, very similar. Accidents and damages to those structures, so, um, I have a set of drawings that I just sent out Thursday for requests for a quote. These will be expenditures that. I have dollars in a bridge line item for, um, but they're, they weren't planned, they're not planned repairs. And I'll just kind of remind everybody. When damages to a bridge. Get to a certain point, um, not necessarily in dollar amount, but in damages that exceeds what we would call normal maintenance. Then the structure itself, because of liabilities and guide rail specifications, have to be updated to the most recent. Value or the most recent design, um, which is expensive. And every structure that we have in the county, um, is not up to that. I hate to use the word standard, but it is, it is be the most recent standard for liability, so. And a designer looks at fixing those structures, then it, um. It has to be updated to the most recent spec, to the most recent standard, so. There will be two more, I think I talked to you a little bit about this, but I have the information and. The insurance company wanna see the drawings, um. Which they can, it's a public document, I use it for a quote, so I have three contractors staying as last time. That are going to give me a quote by, I think I asked for it by the eleventh, I don't, I don't know why I have that date in my head, but then. You guys have a meeting on the, the next Tuesday. Ask for it for the eleventh to get me the quotes back so that I can have it in here for the fifteenth, um, to review it with you guys. Once I have those numbers and we can reach out to the insurance and. Jay, Jay might have something else to say about the minimum amount of liability that each driver may have, which we have talked about before, what they have on their. Policy.
Yeah.
So that it's paid back to us at least for the damages, which won't cover the total cost.
So in both cases, do we know the individuals who are responsible?
Yes.
So yeah, we can, we will sub brigade against their insurance companies, but depending on their, their. Their liability limits, it may not be a lot.
So earlier we had discussion about ensuring our bridges.
Where did that, yeah, it came back, um, but there's, there's no, no. It would never be economically feasible.
Okay.
It would be almost more economically feasible to replace every bridge.
At this rate, that won't seem very. Well, it seems to be, it seems, seems to be, so, um, I don't, I, I don't know.
This is the third one in a year, right?
Well, this is, so this is the third one in two. What I would call construction seasons that I'm bringing forward to the board. But it's not the third one that was hit by people who hit our structures and leave the scene. Or neighbors used the tractor to pull the truck or vehicle off the bridge and. Hush, hush, so that the road department doesn't find out how it gets done. That's not the third time that that's happened. We, we have gone out and done simple maintenance or probably more maintenance than we may have. Should have, um, in a lot of cases in the last six years that I've been here. But once. Once I fully understood the liability that goes along with just fixing that structure instead of upgrading it to its. Necessary standard, then that's the way we are gonna have to do business.
It's almost like the bridges are a drunk driver night.
It seem to be, they seem to be. The one, the one in Paisley actually, um, has some more significant issues with it. Because there's also utilities that are attached to the side of that structure, utilities that don't belong to us. Um, so I'm working with the. Fella, is it Travis, um, in Paisley to kind of talk about how that is taken care of, but.
Those water utilities or electric?
There's sewer on one side, that's forced main from the house on the four side. And then the other side, I think, is electric and to be determined yet if it's old service that went to part of that mill site.
Gotcha.
I'm still waiting to hear. But it will affect the constructability of, it'll affect the. The job and the contractor who's gonna do the work, so.
Okay.
But I do have the insurance information, uh, as soon as I get the drawings back and I'll put all that together so you have it in there.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, James, do you wanna, Commissioner Williams?
Actually, if you could, we could do, uh.
Jay?
The county council RFP first.
All right.
Then do the.
So Jay can get back to work.
We've been waiting for this whole board. No, I, I need what we can give for all this stuff. Good. So the board has previously talked about putting out an RFP for county council services. We're ready to do that, thanks to Melanie, on her work on this. The RFP, we have a draft version ready for your review. Um, we can get this whole RFP process completed within ninety days. Which coincidentally is the, the length of our termination clause with our current county council. So if we wanna award a respondent this, um, contract, we need to do that now. So I need the board to make a decision to, um, give notice or a required ninety day notice to our current county council.
I definitely would like to move forward with giving notice. So is that a motion? I will, we can, is that, are you entertaining the motion, Chair? I should ask. I will make a formal motion to give notice to our current legal counsel, Jim Bailey, in urble. And start the ninety day process. Second.
Motion's been made in second here, Paul Fager.
Aye.
Bye.
Okay, I will do that today. Um, so I need to know how you wanna proceed with this RFP process. Some of the issues that we've talked about are. You know, it won't be a retainer, it'll be on an hourly basis going forward. Our expectation is that he or she would attend our meetings remotely unless we had requested he or she attend. And then we would reimburse for, for mileage or we, we report that up in the contract. Thirty day termination clause rather than ninety day, um. Um, but we might not require employment or labor law as, as one of the areas that they provide assistance in. And possibly land use issues. Um, well, you'll see.
I, I want somebody that knows something about land use though.
Okay, so I want, I'm gonna highlight that in the RFP so that you can make sure that that language, um, does what you want it to do. Because ideally we want, I mean, if we can get somebody that can do all of this, great. If we can't, we will consider, um, someone who can't do those, those parts.
Will they still represent us on labor law issues? To the best of their ability, or will we outsource that?
Um, no. I mean, we don't, we don't need the county council to do that.
Because of CIS, correct?
Because we have free legal advice for employment issues. Um, for labor law or members with local government personnel services with LOC. And unless our county council is a labor attorney, which is gonna be highly unlikely. They're not gonna be able to do that kind of law, so. That make sense?
Incredibly, we, we do also have other legal counsel that helps us with those, those issues.
Yeah, um, we have a labor attorney through LGPS.
Right. Which is an interesting concept, because I just don't want the board to think that we're completely limited when we respond to whoever responds to this RFP. If Jay, Jay is, is capable, we've talked about this a little bit, Jay is able to get another legal counsel to help us with some of these attorney issues. There's no reason why we couldn't do that with, say, the planning department as well on land use matters. Or we could have another attorney and pay for it out of that department specifically for land use issues. In the same way that Jay uses another legal counsel for.
So as an example, if we hire our attorney and he or she is not skilled at land use, we can.
We could potentially.
Track that out.
We could potentially go for a land use attorney that could help us with, say, Luba appeals and so forth. So we just don't want us to think that we're completely limited and, and we don't wanna limit ourselves when we.
I like that idea.
Okay.
But if we have somebody that does apply that is skilled, yeah, that would be a star.
That would be ideal.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then I think the last thing I heard was that we don't require them to be actively practicing. Have a, an active office, but they need to be licensed to practice law in the state of Oregon.
Yeah.
Um, so was there any other issues that you wanted covered in that? I think we've got those covered at this point.
We're not, it isn't a contract for a length of period.
Oh yeah, so, right, it, it, there won't be a termination date, it won't be for the period July one through June thirty. It will be beginning on this date, um, and continuing until one of the two parties terminates the, they bring.
With thirty days notice.
With thirty days notice, yeah.
And then what if we do require, uh, the attorney to be on site?
Yeah, so, um, we would pay them for, and we, I think I've got it covered in there, but we would pay them for their time.
End mileage.
We would, end mileage and, but they would, the expectation is that they would perform most of their duties remotely unless we ask them to come. So that would be one of the, that would be required of them.
So Jay, let, let's go back to the planning department, since we already brought them up. This person's is skilled at planning. And so Darwin or Kenny or whoever from that department needs legal advice. They get the legal advice and then that department itself is charged or, or how we go there?
So, yeah, that's a good question. Um, I was thinking about that as we were talking about these administrative. Because yeah, if Darwin hired somebody other than our county council, certainly that department would pay for it, and the same with business services. I'm not sure, we'd have to talk about how, how we would go on.
I, I think that would make things a lot cleaner, um.
Yeah.
At first it might be a little bit more work, but if the attorney charges it to the specific department that's using that service.
Yeah, and it will be easy to see, um, he's gonna have to send us a bill each month. And it's this phone call from this person, I mean, it'll be easy to allocate those charges.
I think, I think that'll help us a lot too. The only concern I have is I don't want our department heads of being afraid to use. The attorney because they don't wanna charge to their account.
Yeah, maybe on specific issues we could say, look, don't worry about it, we'll take it on, like specifically on a Luba appeal. That would be an appeal of our decision. So even if Darwin Johnson were to work with him or our planning director were to be working with our legal counsel on a matter.
Yeah.
I think it perfectly logical that we would take care of that cost.
You know, as I think about the things that we pay legal counsel for. And the hours that that might take, I, I think we're gonna have the money that we budgeted in the past, I think we're gonna be. We're not gonna go over that, I don't think. I mean, we, we can see how this goes, we may want to do something different next year, but, uh. I think we're gonna find that this is gonna work well.
So in our admin fees.
No.
Planning pays a hundred fifty bucks per county council.
Yeah, that's not right.
So there will be a change if you are talking about what you're talking.
I, I just think it makes it cleaner, it makes it more fair. We can kind of see where we're. Using it, maybe somebody's using it for frivolous stuff, I doubt it, but.
So we have gone into some detail, they've gone, county council, we've asked him to give us an estimate of. You know, break down, where are you spending your time? And he's done that, and apparently he doesn't think he spends much time.
I must reflect in the admin fees where he's put them.
Yeah, it does, it, that.
But on the other hand, he was, self admittedly said that he didn't know much about planning law.
Right.
And so.
But like, I can, I would like to think that he spent a lot more than a hundred fifty dollars worth towards planning in the last year.
Yeah, he certainly has this year. Um, he's probably looking at all, you know, this in, in general. He may not work with that department a lot. In his mind.
And I think we need to notify our department heads, the folks that have the ability to use the, our county council. And just tell them, you know. Tell them one that we're looking for an RFP. We'll go ahead and use Mr. Bailey for the next ninety days. And, um. And they'll be billed accordingly, their part will be billed accordingly to how much we lose that dirt. And. I think, I think it's gonna be good, so just, next year we'll see. Yeah, and we actually may even save some of it.
Okay. So the timing of this.
Meeting's recorded, we can play this back, listen to what you just said. We'll see how the, the work plays out.
You two get home and get the fire.
Yeah.
Quit making.
I think it'll work out good, that's what I heard.
Don't you sit down every January first to make these, December thirty first predictions? So the timing of this, you know, if we, we can get this RFP out this week, it's really, I think it's close to being ready. So I'll get it to you this afternoon, and if you wanna review this and talk about it again tomorrow. May potentially approve.
Yeah, let's go slow to go fast, so if we could look at it again tomorrow.
Okay. Um, then we wanna put it out for at least six weeks, um, and then three weeks to review that there. You may want to do some interviews depending on the circumstances. Then that gets us to the end of April, so we're looking at being ready to implement a new agreement on May first. Is that the timeline work?
Yes.
So are you going to be in Paisley tomorrow? Cause there are meetings in Paisley.
Okay.
Or do you just wanna send us with the information or?
Well, let's, let's see how, we could get this out to you today, you know, visit with you guys. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe when we get back.
I mean, there may be a lot to discuss, I don't know.
Okay.
ARP.
But I definitely will come from the.
I, I'm sorry to.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I don't think the ARP necessarily means to finalize the meeting, is it?
Well, this is the, I mean, we have a meeting tomorrow.
There has been some changes to it.
Okay.
And I need, when I need approval to be able to send it out. We can, I mean, if you wanna do something other than approve it tomorrow, that's okay, we have time, but we wouldn't be able to wait till the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we just.
Do we move by consensus, I guess, yeah, I feel like, you know.
Yes. We'll just do it by consensus tomorrow.
We'll talk about our issues and then we'll pass those on to you tomorrow when we get back and we'll work towards a consensus.
Okay, right, and then once I have consensus, I have the direction to put it out.
Right.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Did you need to spread anything else? Do you wanna talk about anything else or is that it?
No, that's it.
All right, let's roll on.
Thank you, James.
Thanks.
You're up on your third amendment.
Alrighty. So I met with the hospital and we went over this. Again, one of the we we talked a little bit about revenue reports, we still haven't gotten any revenue reports from the health district since November. But what we did determine through our meeting, I met with Ed, I met with Joey and Charlie Dwight as well came in while I was there. Also, they provided me this one sheet, I don't know if it's in you guys' packet, I think, which likely is. But it has, it has some numbers on how many dollars have actually been spent so far and what the total funding actually is. Then it comes out to, for for public health, somewhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred thousand dollars, which is significantly, and I mean, if Ann was here, she could tell you based on her past experience. Is is huge compared to past years. One of the things that Charlie and I talked about was not letting grants change the purpose of public health. Because a lot of times we think, oh, well, hey, there's some grants out there, you know, there's some dollars, we can take these dollars and we can put it into a program. And, you know, but the problem is with that is that a lot of the times the nature of those individual grants change our goal and our mission. And our mission should continue to remain, you know, what what fits for Lake County. And that came as a directive, basically, not directive, but as as best suggestion, so to speak, from the health district and from Charlie Dwight himself. And to be careful when we go out for contracts with very small amounts of dollars to us, because a lot of times there's a lot of restrictions to them, you have, you know, in this case, what I was looking at, if I can turn you guys' attention. I could beat a dead horse too much. To the last page, page seven of seven. Because the the first portion of the dollars on PE twelve dash zero one, Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Response. We're looking at an additional amount of eight hundred and nineteen dollars based on an original allocation of thirty seven thousand. But down below on the PE twelve dash zero two of COVID nineteen response, it was just six thousand fifty five dollars and twenty cents. Which to me, it looked like it wasn't coming from, that it was a, it was a brand new allocation. Like it was, where where this is a new program and if it was, six thousand dollars doesn't pay for admin fees. It doesn't pay for the cost of building the program and starting a new project up and new work for Judy. However, dude, when I got ahold of Joey, Joey said he'd do some research, he he wasn't know, wasn't sure. But it did come out that these are, I think it's on page six. If you go down halfway, PE twelve dash O two, these are rollover unspent funds from fiscal year twenty one, they must be spent by March fifteenth of this year. So very short timeline in which these dollars could be spent, but it wasn't giving us a number of where the dollars, what were the, what the original allocation was. Because it was just showing us six thousand some odd dollars, it wasn't showing a past award. But they are general purpose dollars and that's the key that Joey and myself and Ed discovered. So we can actually use these dollars for salary and that is what these dollars.
We can usually?
Yes, we can. So the cost of Judy's position and the hours that Judy puts in. So that was, that was news to all of us, actually, that we would be able to use these dollars for that. Because because of the short time window, having to have them spent by March third or March fifteen, I believe, actually. We wanted to make sure that dollars could actually be spent. So I I would recommend approving this, the only other piece that I want to bring is just information. Is that out of the nine hundred and three thousand dollars that we have in the budget, there is going to be a significant amount of dollars that will be being sent back to the state by the health district. Because they are unable to spend those dollars because of many contracts that we have approved. Would would, you know, that calculate up all these dollars, make up all these dollars that are earmarked for specific purposes that we just haven't been able to allocate for. And Judy hasn't been able to spend. So there will be some dollars that will be going back to the state, I don't have numbers on that yet, and that is the health district. You know, because they're scrambling to try and use them up as best they can and in whatever way they can. So.
Thank you for your research on that, asking a question, we haven't had a revenue report since November, weren't we supposed to have them every month?
Yes, well, at least quarterly.
When we had that discussion before, right, am am I wrong? I mean, no, I thought we've discussed this before, that we wanted a revenue report on a monthly basis.
Joey and I talked about this as well and I reminded Charlie, and had some great info on this topic. Because we are in the middle of an audit and the state is going back and forth with the health district right now, reminding them that this work is not done. Specifically the area and the part where they are to report to us as to how dollars are being spent and how often and how much. That the subsipient, sub sub recipient review is not being completed. And it's not because we haven't been asking and the state is aware of it and the health district is aware. And so they are, they have hired a new physician just recently, his name's Troy. And he says, and his job will be specifically this. And you will likely be seeing him come before us and giving us a review on all these topics once he gets up to speed. He literally just started, I got to meet him the first time when I was there last week. So hopefully, things are changing. They hired this this gentleman for the specific purpose of monitoring the dollars passing through the county to the health district for both mental health and public health. And he will also be providing us our, the fiscal reviews and the information. So with that, just a lot of information on this, I was glad I kinda went back through this and spent some time and I think it helped Joey have a better understanding of how they were going to be able to utilize these dollars.
My question is, when these come to us in the future. We can't spend two months figuring out whether they're legit or not.
Right.
We need to be able to know, react on today or do we?
We talked about that, we talked about the fact that.
I mean, you need a little more background, I guess, when they are. Well, I I think, you know, they've been laying the work a lot of the time on Melonie or one of the commissioners to bring it forward. If they want the money, present it to us and then then we won't have this headache anymore, you know. If if they come to us and say, this is, this is more worth than the money.
Yep.
Then.
I mean, that leaves to be a job of choice as well, yeah. No, absolutely, this is, this is what we talked about, the fact is that we are literally, we we went down, we had a meeting with the CEO, the head of financial and Joey and 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 a commissioner. Four people and like you say, for a month, two months of time, over eight hundred dollars on one and six thousand dollars on the other, I mean, it's peanuts. It it's, it's not worth the time, so in the, I think it's a great tool that we can use to bring them to the table, to give us our, to give us those updates. Because if, like you say, if they want the money, come talk to us and we'll make sure.
I'm not, I'm not trying to deny them any money.
Oh, no.
They have coming to them, but we just wanna make good sound decisions and we can have a little more background, because these are harder to interpret.
And they they want, they want that too, and that's exactly what Charlie's direction made was, from the health district's point of view, it helps them tremendously. We don't approve programs or contracts that result in money that they either can't spend or money that is too small for them to, for it to be effective in any way. So.
And my thought is to, if if they want these programs and projects okay with us, they have to present. And, you know, I'm just not going to take half the mumbo jumbo, I don't even know what it means, you know, then.
Understand that.
And.
Yep, and hope for the best, because what it, what it's done is it's resulted in a significant amount of money going back to the state and the feds. And that's not good for future grant proposals and everything else, and they know that, so.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and move on, your mutual aid agreement.
Okay, so.
Hold on a second.
Oh, do we need action on this today?
Do you wanna do it today?
We can get it out of like, I didn't know if it was on tomorrow else.
So let's go ahead and do I hear a motion, does this have, anybody have a motion on the third amendment to OHA agreement one, six, nine, five, one, eight?
I will move to approve the agreement as stated.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
No.
So fiscal impact to the positive of six thousand eight hundred seventy four dollars and twenty cents.
As well as eight hundred and nineteen from for the public health emergency preparedness response.
That's clear.
Yeah. Oh.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passed, thank you, Melonie, for the. Okay, Commissioner, we start again initially.
Okay, so, yeah. So this is a public health modernization cross jurisdiction agreement, mutual aid agreement with UUmatilla County. They, Umatilla County recently hired a gentleman by the name of Michael Stensrud, I hope I'm pronouncing his name correctly there. But I spoke to their director of public health, actually just this morning, again, Joseph. And so Michael is an epidemiologist that they hired specifically for Umatilla County's purposes. He is currently working on communicable disease data, of all communicable diseases. Of any type, whether it be, you know, the common cold, the flu, whatever it might be, and he is gathering that data as counties might need it. Because we just don't have the capacity in a lot of these other rural counties in order to provide and to extrapolate and pull that data out for each individual county. But we also recognize that communicable diseases in the same way a storm, a flood, which also emergency management is factored in here, they don't know boundaries of counties in the same way. So the mutual aid agreement is a way of dealing with some of this stuff on a regional basis and to get us the data that we can use. Now, I've asked some of the questions about what kind of data this would be and what the sharing would look like. There are some language in here specifically around, you know, the utilization of zip codes and date of births and that's pretty much it. But some of it's not, it's not just pertaining to people. It's also pertaining to, say, natural disasters, flooding, you know, drought, all those different things. If a county, they're going to deal with what we ask them to. They don't touch anything unless we ask them to or what what the county directs them for. But they could be used as an asset for our health departments to pull data and to give us information as we see fit. And it's a way of doing it on a regional basis with Umatilla County that we don't have to necessarily rely on OHA and the state. Excuse me. Um, so that in a nutshell is basically what this program is doing, it helps us share resources in the event of an emergency. Because, you know, we hope twenty twenty never happens again, but if it were, they hired this position to deal with a lot of this data sharing on a regional basis separately so that we could, we could have more control. Because what was happening was counties that were really, really small and rural just did not have the bandwidth in order to deal with some of the reporting and the data and everything else and all the information. So this is what this gentleman does and he works for the individual counties. Questions?
So I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
One, one is, are they also gonna keep data on adverse reactions to the vaccine?
They could.
And number two is, what's our fiscal impact that we use this guy?
There is no fiscal impact to the county. It is a mutual aid agreement with zero fiscal impact because it is already budgeted and paid for by Umatilla County. The way that Umatilla County is apparently looking at it is it increases their capacity and their and their ability, ability to function. Because they're taking into account what's happening with their neighbors and everything else as well, they did it mainly in the northwest or the northeast portion of Oregon. But they've expanded and they're working with the other counties as well in eastern Oregon. And it's been really, they feel like it's complementing them and he's able to take on the extra work. But yeah, if if those are things that you're looking for, I think that you could definitely give direction and ask for him to look at that data and pull that out. Especially being that he is an epidemiologist and he is working specifically right now on communicable disease data. Any other questions?
I can give it to Umatilla County.
I had, I mean, I I worked with him a ton on this and I had a million questions for him and I'm trying to zip through it as best I can.
Well, it's good to hear.
Okay.
Do you wanna save this for tomorrow?
Can I look, can I look at the termination clause, it's ten days. Yeah. Yeah, so we can terminate at any time, basically, ten days notice, boom. So we've talked about that as well.
Um, we probably should save this for tomorrow, so we actually have, well, we're gonna have a fairly busy day tomorrow with Paisley, Christmas Valley updates.
Yeah, we can, we we can get it off our plate because we start.
Yeah, or just go ahead or I'm gonna ask for a motion on this.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the mutual aid agreement for Public Health Services Modernization Collaboration with Umatilla County in Lake.
One second. Motion's been made and seconded, do we have any further discussion?
Uh, just one note, there are two separate pieces here that need signatures. On page five, you will see Umatilla County signs as well as the chair from Lake. And and also the actual modernization collaboration as well as just the two piece. Just the note.
Copy that. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion secure.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Do we have any liaison updates?
Um, I have one.
Okay.
So Stacy and I were talking, I don't know if Stacy knows I was going to bring this before you guys, in fact, I didn't though. But Ann brought it up and it got my wheels turning again today was Stacy had purchased a boating machine last year. We still have the other two old, old ones. Stacy was one wondering and she's just got it in her mind, she's thinking about potentially at some point coming forward to look for a secondary one as a backup. And she can work that into her own budget and everything so forth, but she's thinking about another machine similar to the one that we already have, if not the exact same.
Can they use our old ones anymore?
Yes.
Okay.
They definitely can, so it's, like Stacy and I were talking, it's not necessarily necessary to go get another one as a backup. But for just the sake of consistency and everything, we can go back to the other two if we needed, so.
We love to.
And none of them have remote wifi capability.
Even living ones.
Correct. Or USB hookups. So.
I love the living ones.
Yes. So just FYI. So just FYI.
Um, this Thursday evening, I will be up at Northlake School, uh, working with Gail Berman, the superintendent in Northlake. And KCC with Chip Nasty, and we're going to be discussing with the public. Uh, KCC's, uh, role with providing, uh, further education. And, you know, we have a tax base up there on the north end with KCC now. And kinda laying that framework out to the public for those that are interested, to better understand what they will provide here in the future. You also brought up the, uh, North End Lakeview Water Project earlier in the. You know, the town of Lakeview was not able to take that project on, uh, due to, uh. Some of the costs that they have going on and the potential for their, uh, waterline. Uh, repair work that they have planned, the big project. And so we're just looking into seeing, uh, if the county can take that on. We're also looking for money to help, uh, fund that project, so we're working with Representative Owens on that.
Well, what was the ask for repose?
We were offering two hundred fifty thousand dollars of our money on our behalf. And, uh, we were asking for one point three.
And the total project cost?
It's closer to one point six, again, that's an estimate. Uh, unknown, you know, exactly what it is at this time. But the, uh, goal would be to connect, uh, from the Goldmore Water District. To where the water is currently, uh, quits there by the cemetery. Doubles down to Collinsville.
Copy that.
So we'll see, see where it lands, see if Representative Owens has any luck with us in the short session. And we'll keep moving on and, you know, uh, work with the town if, uh, if everything works out.
Sounds great. Mr. Odoni, do you have anything you wanna ask?
Sure. Uh, Odot asked me this week if we were interested in the feasibility study of putting electric. Stations in at our facility, and so we're gonna look into that.
What, what facility?
The senior center, our parking lot area that we have there, um. So we'll look into that and see if it's feasible, there trying to be net loss with your transit vehicles, so. It might be an opportunity to get some vehicles that we need, our fleet's really outdated. I have a lot of concerns and hesitations, but we'll see, so Andrea said she's. Accepting of entertaining the thought, it'd be great for them potentially, so. We'll see where that goes, but I'm excited that they thought of us and that they think of us as a good partner.
Copy that, thank you for your work on that. With all that, we'll, unless you guys have something else, we'll adjourn the meeting at eleven sixteen. See you tomorrow.
Congratulations, Commissioner, you cleared the room.
Good. Nobody ever sticks it out to the end, I don't know.